Forty-two vehicles, three defibrillators, one Jaws of Life system and one paging system we've given out, and it's been all paid back without interest, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars in loans over that period of time. What we need the board to authorize us is to be able to expend basically the total of the fund which would, that isn't lent out, so we have authorization to spend if anybody wants a loan of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Move to receive.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Animal?
Animal Control has a total budget of seven thousand, sixty-seven dollars. We do only the unincorporated areas of the county. This fund comes from the rural basic. We have reached, when we took over the animal control program, we were running over a hundred animals a year. We've made some strategic decisions on how to better serve the public with this. Instead of us going and picking up every dog that gets called in, we have a lost and found program which allows the owners of a missing dog to call us. We keep on record the missing dog, and then if you call and you've got the dog, we say, "Call this person, we think it's their dog," so we don't even go pick them up. So we've been able to whittle that number down to between thirty and forty dogs a year when we were well in excess of a hundred. We only do strays and abandons. We don't do dogs or cats that are left at a residence as a part of a landlord-tenant situation. It becomes the landlord's responsibility to manage those.
Okay, need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, County Health Services, Mental Health, County Services, M.H. Patty and Dennis.
I'll explain this a little bit. Mark High attended a meeting. There was three supervisors for each county. And Matthew's been at another meeting where we had a regional meeting there a month ago. And what we talked about was the count of the budget that we did through your packet here. This basically is for information only because of Sioux Land, Sioux Rivers region does set the budget. All we do is levy the money. So when you go through this four-page document here to show the budget and the different areas it's spending, we come back to where the tax levy is three million, five sixty-four, zero eighty-six. We did talk about possibly, you know, if you had extra money, could reduce that tax asking. But a lot of discussion up there. I think, Mark, I think you agree with this, with this coming year, because a lot of uncertainty is with our legislators still, we're still levying the maximum levy. And then the following year, there might be a possibility, but when they look at the Sioux Rivers, that's where I have the cash flow, everything like that, it may change then.
Do we need a motion?
The motions would be that we levy the three million, five sixty-four, zero eighty-six.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Next is, where'd it go?
Case management.
Case management.
Case management is approximately one point one, one point two million dollars. That is a hundred percent federal and state dollars that come into Woodbury County for the program to arrange services and keep services falling for our knowledge, which is a popular population. So there's no county tax dollars included in that.
We need a receiver?
Yes.
Move to receive.
This budget, the board does have control. That's not part of the Sioux Rivers.
Right. But it's not county tax dollars.
No.
Correct. I have a question on forty-one thirty-six parking, twenty-four hundred.
Our three vehicles that we own for the program are parked here in the ramp.
That's four slots.
The fourth slot is a vacant slot that we keep when cars come in and have to drop off or be at need here, they've got one, where they can exchange cars and go.
Anybody wanna? You want a parking spot? Mark walks from the parking ramp, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to receive.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
On the, I'm sorry, Mr. Ray. On the office supplies, I was just wondering, and gas and oils as well, those look, the fiscal year to date seems a little bit out of line with actual expenses.
A lot more mileage than that on gas will come when the case managers have to attend annual trainings, and one, so that'll be going back and forth. Probably two vehicles will be involved going back and forth to the money for that training.
So that's all fuel?
Yeah. And oil changes on the three vehicles.
I don't know.
And then we have more and more residents, more and more individuals being up at Old Haven, La Mar's, trying to coordinate them so we don't make any trips up there, because we're going up to Old Haven, Rock Valley, we've got folks in Rock Rapids, folks up in Spencer, we've got folks throughout North West Idaho.
Are these, are these office expenses covered in a hundred percent also?
Okay, what's the procedure?
There's a motion and a second to receive.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Done. Okay, Dennis?
Okay, and I'll add some assistance on this. What we have here for wage plan, and we already found a wage plan, and there was a plan adopted before, well, put forth, this would be a third year, a full-year plan. And I don't know how far we want to get in actual percentages, because we are in negotiations right now. Are we probably going to be saving this with, with the wage plan?
Wasn't, wasn't this set up three or four years ago?
It's, it's.
It's public knowledge.
We're in the third year of a four-year agreement. And the third year of the four-year agreement was one where we would do, that's where we do the two percent plus the one and quarter percentage. Dennis, I would bet this spring, this summer, if we discussed the fact that it would not be compound, it would be two percent plus one and quarter, not two, one and quarter on top of a hundred and two percent. It's small, but it's been the biggest difference. And they said. Yeah, if you do the two percent first, then you get your product, then you do percent and quarter again, then your compound is really more than three and quarter. So the way we set up is just flat three and quarter, which is a two and a quarter, and not compound. And this plan is back one more year and then stuck. And the total of that, that everybody knows, we have five million, approximately wages for next year, because we have four million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. The wage plan increased with one new position, which is not funded by the county, but it's the county attorney's position, that's a federal prosecutor, essentially has paid for the county now, it goes to five million, seventy thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars for fiscal twenty sixteen. It's a hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for an increase, which is three point nine six percent. The, with, if you take that position out of it, that one is not technically funded by the county, then you wind up at five million, sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars portion, which is two point eight five percent. That includes people that are getting step increases, people that, you know, some of their older positions, we have new people in, so, you know, they have some reduction salaries. So net out, really, we have two point eight five percent because the one new position that we figured in originally was actually a, was actually a attorney's position that's reimbursed, that were reimbursed for my federal.
For the benefit of the two new supervisors, this was a catch, a catch-up that was initiated three years ago.
And I apologize, I should've come to the microphone. That, then, what Larry's saying is absolutely right, that this was initiated with the idea, stop me if I interrupt, I shouldn't.
Bad.
But, but it was initiated to help bring, because there've been some wage freezes in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, as I remember, and so this was initiated to help catch the wage plan people up to the AFSCME contract because it was to mirror the AFSCME contract. That's why this four-year plan was put in place.
May I ask whether this includes all the department heads and several other people or class wage plan?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
So the motion would be?
Approve the third year of the plan.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Can I jump the county CIP and go to the Phoenix, and then jump to Sioux Land Paramedics and do that one so Gary can go home, and then we go home? Would just move these other items to next week that work? Okay, Phoenix Program, sir, I apologize, he's been here since ten o'clock this morning.
It's been a very interesting day. Thank you for, for keeping me entertained for that many hours. My name is Ben Nesseloff.
If you think this is fun.
Thirty-seven seventeen Field Crest Drive, I'm the Vice President of Jackson Recovery Centers and also the Executive Director of the Foundation. Jackson Recovery Centers is, of course, the organization that contracts with the county to do a jail-based substance abuse treatment program known as the Phoenix Program. I won't get into the weeds on, on exactly what it is that's performed. I realize at this stage and the day being brief is certainly in my favor, so I will do so. Just to give you a quick overview of the results of this program, the Iowa Consortium for Substance Abuse and Research out of the University of Iowa did a study on the program. Granted, this is a little bit dated, but there's been nothing substantive to change the, the program or the outcome, so, so these are the best numbers we have. But at admission, of course, a hundred percent of the people that are involved in this program, a hundred percent were using a substance that would be, at a level that'd be considered addiction. Ninety-eight percent had been arrested before, twelve percent as many as four times. Only twenty-six percent at the beginning of this program were full-time employed. One year after completion of the program, that's not completion of their sentence, but rather completion of the outpatient treatment program as well. Sixty-eight percent were maintaining abstinence. That means they weren't using drugs. I, that confused me the first few times I read it, but sixty-eight percent were maintaining abstinence, eighty-four percent had no arrests, and fifty-seven percent had full-time employment. By addiction treatment standards, this is a rate of success, this program. Now, I understand that the board is looking to cut expenses. I think we put forward a good faith effort, as you can see, in the proposal we put forward. We were able to cut the expense of the program to the county by over forty percent, saved in the county almost fifty-five thousand dollars. We were able to do that by doing some cost shifting, moving the outpatient program. The entire expense of the outpatient program, we've been able to fund through other sources. So what we are asking for is simply the cost of providing the in-jail treatment portion. The, this program saves money. The same consortium did a cost analysis study on, on this exact program. And what they found was that for every dollar spent, the, the savings to the taxpayer was two dollars and ten cents. Now, that's before, this is also a little bit dated, of course, the costs of incarceration have gone up since then. That was before we were able to save an additional forty percent, so I would argue that this, the savings is probably four dollars now for every dollar that's spent. So as a Woodbury County taxpayer, and one who hopes to be a Woodbury County taxpayer for a number of years, I hope that you will see that this is a policy and a program that really hits that nice intersection of good social policy and good fiscal policy. I realize that this is not a mandatory expense, but I think the, there's clear evidence that every dollar we spend now will save us numerous dollars in, in future years, and that would be mandatory. So I hope you can see the good, good that this program's doing and the good fiscal policy that it sets forth, and I would stand by for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We, I attend a group called the Programs Committee, which meets quarterly, and they discuss Project Compass and Phoenix and anything else going on in there. I've been doing that for ten years. It is a really, really good program. It works. I never believed you could get people off of meth. I thought it was a lifelong deal. They're doing it, and it works. The problem is, they were down to three people. Can't run a program on three people. And I don't know if the numbers have kicked up or not.
I was gonna ask that question, Mr. Chair. Could you tell us how many people were served during this last fiscal year? I understand the rate was at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, and this is one of those that are, is directly taxpayer-funded. I know we had that discussion this morning, but I, I wanted to ask that question.
The numbers I show for two thousand fourteen, and I'm going off a graph here, it looks like approximately twenty-five people were, went through the assessment process for that.
So twenty-five people, and this would've been July first to June thirty, are you using a fiscal year, do you know that?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm going off of clips to data who couldn't be here today.
Okay, so twenty-five people at a cost of a hundred and thirty-one thousand during this past year, and I'm just trying to do the math because it's a little, what's that?
A little four thousand.
Okay, so is that the, the actual cost of the, per person, if I was an inmate?
I would estimate.
But I mean, is that the actual cost of Jackson Recovery, four thousand per inmate?
I would believe so.
So if that's the case, then at seventy-four thousand, let's say, are you, are you saying that the only, we would service less than twenty individuals?
I, again, looking at the, the cost shifting that's occurred, I think that this is set up to, to serve a, about the same amount of people as we did in two thousand fourteen, it's just we were able to shift the cost for the outpatient program.
The whole program is and was based on the synergy amongst a lot of agencies. So the public defender, the county attorney, the judges, the jail, all those folks had to work together to pick these people out, to get them in the program. Everything stayed fairly constant. Last year, with the exception of the public defender, we lost the one that really pushed the program. There's another one now connected, but I'm not hearing that numbers are moving. You had some turnover, which I think caused us to stumble a bit. But that, I'm concerned about, if the synergy isn't there, we're spinning our wheels. Jim, you always have something to comment.
I, I don't think the synergy's disappeared. I mean, I, excuse me, it's late in the day, I'm all talked on. We still have Project Compass, the mental health court. So we send case managers into the jail every day, everybody's assessed, then we come before a mental health court. If you're willing to go into the program, then you're into the program, you're out of jail. We work toward recovery, we work toward employment, we work toward housing. That program is working the way it's always worked. On average, we serve anywhere from forty to fifty people a year, and we've had many successes over the course of the year, and reduced the jail population I mentioned this morning. Now, that program is connected with what goes on at Jackson because, as many of you know, people with mental illness, unfortunately, all too often suffer from substance abuse issues as well, self-medication issues, et cetera. So there is a synergy between what they're doing at Jackson and what we do. When we make an assessment in the jail that there's a substance abuse issue, we refer to the Phoenix Program and, of course, the work at Prairie Hills that's been done out there over the years. But the other part of the synergy is connected to the drug court because we're associated with the drug court process, so people can move for the drug court, no cost to the county for the drug court. In addition to that, there will now be a veterans' court, which is being initiated across the state, here in Woodbury County. So we all work together with the same basic philosophy. We want to keep people out of jail, into recovery, housing, employment, and a stable life, and it works fairly well. And if you were to look at what we do in Woodbury County, it's a fascinating deal in one minute. We're the only county left in Iowa that still has a mental health court. One of the few counties in Iowa has a drug court. One of the few counties in Iowa that have something like Project Phoenix, and probably one of the first, if not the only county that will have a veterans' court. So all of that is a remarkable achievement that's conducted at this county level. So we all work together, interchange the ideas, interchange program, we refer people back and forth. Primary issue is substance abuse, they end up at Jackson Recovery. Primary issue is mental illness, they end up with us at the mental health center. So, I mean, we're in support of the program. It was all one part of the same package in terms of reducing jail populations and getting people toward recovery. And it's still working well, so, I don't know. I could talk all day, you don't need that, I don't need it, but we can all visit more about it any time. But I understand the dynamics of what you're talking about there in terms of how programs are funded. We have the luxury in the mental health system of having a system that's guided in a different direction, so we don't have to have these incremental discussions about each one of our programs. And God bless you all for not having us have to do that, okay? Not that we're not affected, but the point is, we're happy we're in our position. So I support Phoenix. Any questions?
What is the actual out-of-cost? And if I'm asking the same question again, I apologize, but the cost to Jackson Recovery per patient?
In this program?
Right.
I, I can only defer to, to the math that you did previously, that it's about.
So four thousand dollars.
I was on, it's five thousand, it's about five thousand two hundred.
Okay, so fifty-two hundred dollars.
I went to public school, I'm a product.
And if an, an individual wanted to be serviced and was on a, a pain basis, let's say, would, would there be any mechanism by which a person could?
Let me be clear, our, our goal is to treat the patient. We've seen an increase in individual insurance in the last year that's been very helpful for our bottom line, but we still do literally millions of dollars in, in charity care every year where that debt's forgiven if somebody can't afford, can't afford it.
I, if I have a drug or alcohol problem and I want to, I want to sign up and I want to pay on my own?
Mm-hmm. We, yes, we would set up a payment plan where that would work for you. And I just.
I don't, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking for the.
I was gonna assume that was hypothetical for a number of reasons.
Sign him up.
After day, we, we may all sign up.
Yeah.
Been a long day.
But an individual could, if this program didn't exist, they could contract Jackson Recovery?
Not while they are in. The, the difference between this program and, and other programs, this is an in-jail program that starts for, for on average fifty days while they're in jail, and then extends to an outpatient program beyond that. So the, the significance of this, if this happens while they are, I hate to use this pun, but while they're a captive audience essentially, and that's really where you turn the corner on people who, who don't necessarily feel they have a problem or want to be there, and that's, you're given time to turn the corner where they see that they do have an addiction. And that's incredibly important to, to this particular program. Now, if somebody came out and decided they still wanted to seek outpatient treatment, of course, that'd be available to them.
Thank you very much.
And when you're in jail, your Medicaid is suspended, so many of the people that we're talking about, both in Phoenix and Project Compass, we can't go for any services while they're in jail. Because your Medicaid is suspended, and many of these people now are actually on Medicaid. So when they come out of the jail, we bill Medicaid for their services, whether it's mental health or substance abuse. But in the jail, there's no reimbursable, reimbursable method for any of the services you provide and we provide. And by the way, as you all know, Medicaid has made an enormous difference in what we're all doing in a very good way. So it really helps people access care.
And it keeps them out of the jail.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I, I'll just say my, my piece, and I won't belabor the point, but I, I think in, from the start of today through, been fairly consistent, this was a federally funded program. At first, the federal money ran out at the time. There was discussion whether the county would pick up the federal funding that is no longer there. It's a cost of over five thousand, two hundred dollars per person. That would be an average of seeing one individual every two weeks, and so this is a taxpayer-funded program at this, at this time I'm not willing to support.
Jackie?
I'm just gonna make the motion to approve the budget for Phoenix.
Second.
Comments?
I would just echo what Supervisor Taylor said.
Okay, need a second? We have a motion.
I second it.
You second it, okay.
Record girl call vote request?
Okay.
Hi.
Taylor?
No.
No.
Lawson?
Aye.
Nay.
I'll probably be back.
Very good. All right, Sioux Land Paramedics.
Mr. Chair, just sorry to interrupt. Are we also delaying action on sending the forty-one thousand and the two months for the, for the commission coordinator to the, from our rollover to the commission, or can we act on that?
Oh.
Because that was during my presentation on the commission, we said we'd come back to it during the hearing.
Okay. We better do that because we advertised for it today.
Yeah, exactly. I would move that we accept the commission's budget and commit to, and direct the finance director to use fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars of rollover from emergency services for the commission's startup.
I would second that.
You got all that?
Yep.
Okay.
Gary? Can emergency services take that kind of hit?
It's, it's carryover funds right now.
Right, but what I'm asking is, those funds have been there to be utilized in the past, now we're taking them away, is that?
I think it's an appropriate use for the funds to get the commission, to get this new department up and, and running. I agree with it. There's still other revenue that's in the reserve account that I think could help offset some of the budgetary issues that we're struggling with, but the commission needs to stand up. Thirty-nine thousand of that, quite honestly, should be coming from the, there's what's called an MPG grant, which goes to emergency management. It's always about twelve or eighteen months in the rear. It gets hung up in the whole federal government bureaucratic process, so they need that as, as seed money in order to make the commission work, and I, I really do support. I want to see the commission successful, and I support doing it.
Thank you, Gary.
Well, still, we had a hundred and twenty-six thousand carryover, crew carryover on June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. So I still leave approximately about seventy-two thousand, seventy-four thousand left in there. So.
We need to use, we also all agreed that we need to use some of that seventy-four on the emergency services budget rather than leaving it in reserves, transferring it into light item, we agreed to do that as well.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Sioux Land Paramedics.
Gonna take a minute to explain it. Sioux Land Paramedics is a contract ambulance service to the city of Sioux City, not to Woodbury County. Sioux City has a contract, they've been extending that contract on a year-to-year basis. Sioux Land Paramedics receives a subsidy from the city of Sioux City. We do their dispatch for them through the nine-one-one center. They buy their fuel and get some of their maintenance done through central maintenance garage. The city of Sioux City purchased their rigs. There's not a lot of money to be made in transporting nine-one-one EMS calls. The reimbursement rate is extremely low, there's a lot of no pays, expenses are high. We utilize Sioux Land Paramedics throughout the region and including Woodbury County. So what, we were approached by the city last year to participate in the subsidy based on population. At the subsidy level that the Sioux Land Paramedics was asking for last year, that was thirty thousand dollars. What the Sioux Land Paramedics also agreed was that on their advisory board, that I would sit on their advisory board, work with them on some of their issues to try to see if there's a way we could find some synergy in expenses and find some synergy in collaboration. That's ongoing right now. Myself, Tom Everett, the Sioux City Fire Chief, and Brian Jacobson, the Sioux Land Paramedics Director have been meeting about. We've been every other week, but we got into this budget cycle with the department heads tied up on their, all their budgets, and Brian had a new computer software program, but we're scheduled to meet here again in a couple of weeks. Sioux Land's new contract with the city of Sioux City, the subsidy that we agreed to and we paid for last year was thirty thousand dollars. Sioux Land's new contract with the city of Sioux City increases the amount of subsidy that Sioux Land Paramedics has asked. City increases the amount of subsidy that Sulan Paramedics is asking for, and it would increase our share of that subsidy if you showed desire from thirty thousand to forty-eight thousand one fifty-two. There's no guarantee that they're gonna use that amount, in order for us to have it available and in the budget, we're asking for the board to set aside that amount as part of the subsidy for Sulan Paramedics. We have a lot of work we're trying to get done in EMS, there are huge issues both in fire and EMS in the on-incorporated area, that is gonna take an enormous amount of time over the next year to try to get a strategic plan in place for them. Losing the ability, if we don't help with the subsidy, the city of Sioux City could say to us, this is our contractor, we're subsidizing them, you're not, we're not gonna allow them to leave the city of Sioux City city limits, not good for patient care, not good for the people that live in the on-incorporated area. Our group is also at the same time reaching out to some of the other jurisdictions that are under contract with Sulan Paramedics, or are not under contract with Sulan Paramedics, working with them to try to get other organizations, other governmental agencies to be a part of this subsidy, and if we can get that done, then that would reduce Woodbury County's share, because we would add population, which in theory would reduce the subsidy for us. Does that make sense?
Yes. The per cap for the county, is that strictly rural?
That is the unincorporated and all of its towns.
All of its towns?
All of its towns, less the city of Sioux City.
Why are we picking up the towns?
If we didn't, then we would have to try to carve it out, go to each of the towns and say, and we see this as a short-term, a short-term solution to a longer-term problem. We, if we don't have the subsidy in place, Sioux City says, hey, you can't, Sulan Paramedics, you're not going out of the city limits. You know, it's a game of trade-offs, back and forth out in the rural area, the cities provide transporting ambulance services to the on-incorporated areas, and the county provides through my department, emergency services to everybody, back and forth, so it's kind of a back-and-forth trade-off, and this, this is in that trade-off. We're looking for, is there a way, we're not sure if Sioux City's gonna rebid this contract, but what we're looking is a way, how can we bring that subsidy down? How can we bring that request for subsidy down? Can we do joint purchasing, can we do, is it possible for IT to help us out with Sulan Paramedics, or HR to help us out with Sulan Paramedics? All of those are things that we have on the table, we're trying to sort out, because right now, Sulan Paramedics is a part of Health, Inc., and Health, Inc. charges them so much a month to be their, their accounts payable, and their payroll, and their IT, and so we're looking at, we're looking at all the possibilities, it's just, we're hoping not to have to use this forty-eight thousand, but if we get into a position where Sioux City says, hey, no more paramedic assists, it's not in the best interest of people that we're trying to take care of out there. We're gonna do everything we can to drive that forty-eight number down, but it's, it's really important that we get the strategic planning. The strategic planning has to happen, and our efforts, and the other thing we're doing is we're lobbying like crazy with the Iowa Legislature to try to create a funding mechanism for emergency medical services. You know, Jeremy, when you were in the legislature, EMS is a orphan, it doesn't belong to anybody, and there is no true funding mechanism for EMS, and we're hoping through Senator Jeff Danielson this year, his efforts, that maybe we can get a dedicated funding mechanism established and some ownership for EMS. I will tell you, the attitude across the state is EMS should be dumped at the boards of supervisors, and let you figure out how to pay for it with, and I don't agree with that, I think it needs to be, everybody have a foot in the game.
Dennis?
I talked to the city finance director, Donna Forker, and they are bidding this out, Sioux Falls did bid it out, they had four bidders come forward, and it did drastically reduce their costs. So, Donna told me this last week, they are bidding this out as fire fees, which could drive the cost down, which may or may not need the forty-eight thousand, we should plug it in in case we need it.
Sioux City Fire Department and Sioux City Fire and Rescue Department, as it's now called, sooner or later, I would hope the fire department takes over all the functions Sulan Paramedics. In addition to that, bidding out of the process may be very useful, because that's the dynamic that could make a huge difference in how emergency services are conducted in this city. As you all know, the first responders are the fire department, if you have somebody collapse in this building, who's gonna be here first? It's gonna be a fireman, then the two vehicles, the Sulan paramedics have, maybe it's three now, one of them will get here in a bit of time, but they'll get here. But, so as a result, the fire department has trained more and more people to be paramedics, and it's fully certified paramedics, and ultimately, I would hope that the Sioux City Fire Department can take over the major rescue operation in the city of Sioux City, and it gets away from all the overhead associated with Sulan Paramedics, none of which I will talk about here. However, you have some possibilities in the future, either bidding it out, or the fire department does it. Of course, you have the same dilemma, if the Sioux City Fire Department doesn't, county may want to negotiate with them in some fashion to at least cover the near parts of the county near Sioux City, just some options, because might be time for a change.
I, I think I can do this one more year, but someone's gotta change, this is not right.
I one-hundred percent agree with you, but it would be wrong of us to anticipate and not bring this forward at this point in the budgeting process, I agree with you, I agree with you that if we can't bring the subsidy into some manageable format, that I don't disagree with the city's position to rebid it, we may need to be a part of that rebidding. So when it's bid, we have that service available to the citizens of rural Woodbury County, that paramedic assist, so it's, that complicated, it gets more complicated as the deeper you look into it, because if Sioux City Fire would just take over doing the ambulance service in Sioux City, there would still need to be a non-emergency or a private ambulance service in Sioux City, because there are inner hospital transfers, there are nursing homes and funeral home transfers, and a whole host of other things that, that the city of Sioux City's fire department probably wouldn't do.
Well, those things are not high maintenance, where you get a nine-one-one, you better have a trained person going out to deal with that, transporting someone from a nursing home, you know, I don't know that you need the hotshots in there dealing with it.
The unfortunate part is, everything non-emergency is worth money, so, everything emergency is, is, you're really taking it, yet most non-emergencies, we see about a thirty, thirty-five percent, or most emergencies are thirty, thirty-five percent reimbursement, most non-emergencies can push upwards of eighty percent.
Need a motion? Forty-eight thousand.
Do we not have the time, sorry, I'm just unclear, do we not have the time to bid it out, or what is the?
I just checked with Donna Forker, I think they're in the process of sending out RFPs now.
They've extended the contract for one year.
But they did extend the contract for one year?
They did extend the contract, I think about three or four weeks ago for one year.
Okay.
And on the county level, it would take forever to come up with an RFP.
I think that they're going to bid that out, that there's a conversation that needs to be had between us and the city of Sioux City to make sure that whoever their emergency contractor is, is factored in for.
Dennis?
And part of stipulation, we gave first allocation thirty-five thousand, which ended up twenty thousand, whether they're gonna get together, have a committee, and do a long-term plan to cover this, so hopefully they are working on that.
We are.
Did I get a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Need a motion to adjourn?
I don't know, Mr. Chair.
You want to stay a couple more hours?
Been a long day, a good day.
I'll have an update tomorrow, I'll send out.
You know, if you can get those packets to us before, right? Or next week, stop it, you should have a pretty well one.
Thanks, there are a whole lot left, man. Just review the ones that you laid today, and then, it should, it should be understood, even if you don't cut next week, you still have a four to five hours to hang.
All right, I gotta go.
Are you just three weeks to make it out?